I'd like to welcome you all to the debate for the Agoura Hills City Council candidates. My name is Neil Tictin and I'm the founder of Westlake Revelations and the moderator for tonight's debate. Westlake Revelations, Morrison Ranch Estates Homeowners Association, the League of Women Voters, and the Agoura Schools have joined together to bring you this event. A huge thanks to Morrison Ranch HOA and of course the schools for hosting us tonight. And for those of you that don't know, Westlake Revelations is a site that I started about five years ago. That's a newsletter and a website talking about local issues, in particular in Westlake, but really local all around in the Agoura and Westlake area and the school districts. I was asked by Morrison Ranch HOA and others in Agoura to moderate a debate and I am honored to help our neighbors tonight. Before we get right into it, I would like to introduce Sandra DiGennaro from the League of Women Voters to say a few words.
I am a member of the Lost Virginous Unit of the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles and our unit includes Westlake, Agoura Hills, and Calabasas. This is the 100th anniversary of women's right to vote in California. Yep, one of the first states, yes. The league was created by women who knew that it was more, just as important as voting was knowing what you're voting for. So they wanted to help women become informed and soon everyone to become informed about the issues at stake. Today, our mission is to promote informed and active participation in our own governance. We are nonpartisan, we don't endorse candidates, but we do provide forums, candidate forums such as this. We provide unbiased information on ballot measures. And when we take a position on an issue, it is only after research and study and a lot of study and coming to a consensus within our membership. Membership in the league is open to men and women 18 and over. And I have more information in the back, on the back table if anyone's interested. So I thank you and it's time to get started now. Thank you.
I'm a big believer in events like this happening simply because a community comes together and makes it all happen. The HOA, the PFCs, Willow Elementary, the league, all came together and I thank you. And of course, there was one more group that was hugely tolerant and helpful, my family, who's not here tonight, but they've been tolerating me all week on this, so I appreciate them as well. Now, onto the debate. A quick review of a few rules that the candidates have all agreed to. Each candidate has a four-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. The candidates have chosen numbers out of a hat to determine a random order and that's how they're seated up here tonight in the order they'll start. We have a series of questions. I will ask these questions on behalf of the community based on the questions sent over to Westlake Revelations in the last several weeks and people that have stopped us and talked to us on the street. We've worked hard to make sure that those questions are the questions that residents, that are representative of what the residents would like to hear and what they want to hear most. A couple of days ago, we gave all the candidates a list of the most, a list of most of the topics that we'll be asking about, so they have a chance to investigate each, but they've not been given the specific questions. Time permitting, we'll take some additional questions from the audience and if we can do that, we'll ask you to raise your hand and be called upon. Each candidate will have a one minute, will have one minute to answer the questions and we'll rotate the order, we'll keep track of that for them. They have a timer in front of them, as you can see up here in front, so they can clearly see how much time they have left and when they go over. To maximize the candidates' time, some questions will have a bit of an overview so that the candidates don't have to spend their time stating some of the facts to explain the question. Remember that current council members, in this case John, may be limited on what he can say. You see, their job is not to decide on an issue until all the facts are in and the issue comes up for a vote. For example, they're not allowed to say, "I will vote yes or no" on a specific topic and this may limit what they can say. Enough of the rules except for one more thing. Each of these people up here are our neighbors. This is essentially, well-elected, a volunteer position and in short, they each deserve our respect, especially as we ask them questions. Our first candidate to speak is going to be Sue and we're going to give you a moment to get up here and me a moment to get down.
Good evening. A very special welcome to each of you. You must also share a love of our city because you're here this evening. We have a variety of people in the audience, including city and appointed officials and PFA board members. I regard and appreciate the support of Dennis Weber, Bill Kohler, John Edelston, Barry Steinhardt, along with the endorsement of three planning commissioners and the entire school board. Meeting with each of you and hearing your attachment to our community, along with the school district and your family, has assisted my journey. Thank you to my family and friends for being a part of my campaign. Additionally, I would like to welcome you, the residents, who have come here to listen to us speak tonight. Twenty-five years ago, my husband Vic and I, along with our three children, Jessica, Garrett, and Brayden, moved from the San Fernando Valley to Agoura Hills. Primarily, the natural beauty, along with the outstanding school system, put us in line, yes, a line, to purchase a new home. After that purchase, we came to understand that we selected a city where there was a focus on the environment, safety, pride in community, and family activities and events. I read an article in the Acorn many years ago which asked for applicants to the Community Services Advisory Committee. We were an advisory group who gave input to city staff to complete some of the parks, design new parks, create programs and events, along with volunteering to work at events. The staff wasn't as large at that time. For eight years, I took part in monthly meetings which resulted in a permanent restroom facility at Forest Cove Park, the Equestrian Ring and baseball field at Old Agoura Park, the near completion of Morrison Park, and the Calabasas-Agoura Hills Community Center, where two cities combined forces and funds on county-owned property. And from that seed idea, a recreation center was created. When I served on this committee, there was an interactive process used for decision-making. We met with the people who lived in the neighborhood where the project would have direct impact. The flow of information from the city to the residents and then back from the residents to the city created a very interactive process resulting in consensus by the neighbors. The process was valid then and would guide my work on the council now. We are one city with many, many voices and there is a diversity of facts and opinions that come from living in our distinct neighborhoods. Over the past many months, the campaign trail has led to meetings with friends, elected officials, city staff, educators, business owners, developers, contractors, religious and community leaders, and, yes, friends. From very formal meetings that lasted up to three hours to a brief interaction at someone's doorstep, I continue to hear so very much. A sample of questions are, "How might we push forward for a sound wall adjacent to Liberty Canyon as we see one by the homes at Reyes Adobe?" "How do we maintain the quaint rural aspect of our city and consider business and residential growth?" "Might business owners have additional days to post their signs along with the ability to have parking lot sales in some of our shopping centers?" "Why aren't the lampposts on the three overpasses similar?" It would do our community well if we sat together to hear about our distinct neighborhoods where some of our neighbors ride their horses for exercise and relaxation, others head to the local gym, some walk in their neighborhoods, or they remain home to work out. The options are endless. In order to come together so that we can be more informed about neighborhood needs or requests and to prioritize upcoming projects, I propose a council comprised of representatives from each of our developments or homeowners associations. This community council would discuss distinct neighborhood characteristics, creating common themes, similarities, and of course, differences in our city. Is that the end? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Edelston.
Thank you. Can I just say ditto?
Do you want to go up and, you want to go up in front?
No, I'm just in the seat.
Okay.
That's fine with me. I'm John Edelston and I've been your city council member for the past eight years. I believe that Agoura Hills is a wonderful, safe community with great schools. It's propitious that we are here in a school. We're a community formed from the diversity and blend of our residents and our businesses. And during the past eight years, I have spent my time to work on preserving what we cherish and limiting what we feel detract from Agoura Hills continuing to be the place people want to live. I try to apply my knowledge, experience, and expertise to continue to lead Agoura Hills. For those who don't know me, my background, I am a UCLA undergrad and grad and a Pepperdine MBA. In my work life, I do strategic visioning and work in finance in healthcare. I work with large institutions and small institutions, both predominantly in California, but including Adventist Health System which owns Stevie Valley Hospital, Stanford University, as well as smaller institutions such as Mission Community Hospital. I also volunteer in a leadership capacity in a number of various organizations, the city being one of them. I do work, I do volunteer as a commissioner on the Los Angeles Emergency Medical Services Commission. I've served on the commission for almost 18, 19 years and I've chaired the commission for six of the years. I am a member of the Pepperdine University Graduate School of Business and Management, the Board of Directors, and I also am involved with the YMCA and the development of the YMCA together with our neighboring city of Westlake Village at the Regional Park and YMCA Center. My tenure on the council, I believe, is marked by my being seen as and acting in a straightforward manner, being responsive, transparent. One of the things that I appreciate very much is when I receive feedback from constituents that say that, more than anything they appreciate is that when they send me an email or make a phone call that I get back to them. I am a fiscally responsible individual and I try to convey that and represent that on the council. We have had eight years of balanced budgets. In the last couple of years, it's gotten to be more difficult, more challenging, especially this year with the council's decision to terminate the redevelopment agency as a result of the state creating requirements in which the city of Agoura Hills would be required to pay money out of its general fund to the state in order to maintain the redevelopment agency. But always being responsive to the people in the city. I think a very good example of that is the result of the recreation center and I want to draw a distinction. What Sue was describing with the community center, which is the Agoura Hills-Calabasas Community Center, was exactly correct. We also, in the city of Agoura Hills, have a recreation center and currently it is, shares a parking lot with the Lutheran Church on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And the city recently, earlier this year, purchased land right across the street from the civic center where the rec center will be. When it was originally proposed, the proposal was that it be at one of the parks and specifically Forest Cove Park and I voted against it only because I felt it needed to be heard by the community. And it was heard by the community. There was a group of people who organized called Friends of the Agoura Hills Parks and as a result, there was a lot of reconsideration and consideration made and the purchase of the property resulted from that consideration.
John, time's up.
Time's up. Thank you. Time goes too quickly. Thank you.
It goes very quickly. Sorry. Elise, did you want to go up?
Yep.
I'm going to stand. I'm more comfortable at a podium. Are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay. As you can see, I was coming up here tonight and I had all kinds of detailed, wonderful things to tell you about what I want to do for the city of Agoura Hills. My brother came over to my house at four o'clock today and said, "I don't know if you want to hear this, but I'd walk up there and I would tell him how much you love this city and how hard you've worked for it." So this, I'll save for another day, come up and talk to me about it. And that's what I'm going to tell you. I love this city, so does everybody up here. Obviously, you do too, that's why you're here. What sets me apart from the other candidates is my experience. I've been on the planning commission for six years. I've been a tough planning commissioner. You're going to hear more about that when we go through the various questions. There's some very specific things that I wanted to tell you, but there's just no time to do it, so I'm going to break this down into a couple of categories of what I consider to be top priorities for me. The environment, the scenic landscape, I think it's close to 90% of you agree with me on that from the survey that we took for the, on the General Plan Advisory Committee. 91% of the people here are here, living here for the quality of life and very close to that scenic landscape is right on the top. I have a proven record on the, on the planning commission of protecting, maintaining our open space, our oak trees. I'm going to fight hard for Chesbrough Meadow to stay designated as open space. I'm going to continue my efforts to preserve the wildlife corridor along Liberty Canyon. I'm going to fight hard to strengthen our ridgeline and oak tree ordinances. I want to establish a dark skies ordinance. I don't think Thousand Oaks Boulevard needs to look like an airport. I'm going to work hard at complying with the general plan and I'm going to show you what the general plan is, but it's about this thick. And it's the plan that are the founders of this city put together with the vision of what Agoura Hills is supposed to be. I've, I've worked on the general plan update. I'm very proud of what we did and all I can tell you is pedestrian-friendly, 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 sustainable resources, and I'd like to take Agoura Hills and have it be one of the greenest cities in America. Recycling of food waste is an important issue. Multi-unit housing in Agoura is not recycling. That's something we should look at. Next priority, schools. You're going to hear us all talk about how important it is to have a relationship with the school district. I agree. I'm already doing that. I'm already involved in the T H E Foundation. I've been to board meetings, I'm going to continue to go to board meetings, I was at the kickoff event. It's a very exciting organization and it's the way of the future. Measure K. I've already been at phone banks, I've supported Measure K. I was at the school board meeting when the school board decided to recommend for it to be on the ballot. I spoke in support of it. In August, I went to our city council and I said, "Please, join me in supporting Measure K." I know they, I've heard that they all individually support it, but the city, the city of Calabasas has come out in support of Measure K, Agoura Hills City Council has not yet. With all due respect to the city council, I'm sure it's on the agenda, I'm sure it's going to get done, I only hope it gets done before the election. Parent alumni. I, let me tell you a little story. I have been active in the schools from day one. I was a room parent, I was a PFA fundraiser, I've been a team parent at Agoura High Basketball Associate, the basketball team. And my son graduated in 2010 and you would have thought I fell off the face of the earth. And I want to see a parent-alumni group get started up. I'd like to see what the city can do to help that. We need to stay involved, all of us. Every resident in the city needs to be invested in our schools. We have to do it. Quality schools make quality cities, quality cities make quality schools. Lastly, business. Nobody is more supportive of local businesses than me in this city. And this is not just as a candidate, I've been buying local for four or five years. When I redid my family room in the house, my husband and I, we went to the local furniture areas. Leader Carpets has carpeted our house. We're having our pavers done by a local paver here, right here in Agoura Hills. Unique businesses like Ladyface, Hugo's, Tifa, Stoneground, run, own, manage by local Agoura people. That's what we want. It doesn't get much better than that. You'll hear more as I finish, when we get into the debate.
Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for coming. Does it sound okay? So, my name is Dr. Merrill Platzer. So why do I want to become a member of the city council? I'm a physician, a healer, I'm not a politician. I do not have an ulterior motive. My, I do have an agenda to maintain the quality and healthy lifestyles of our city. I have been a resident of the city with my husband and I, ex-husband and I, over 30 years. We moved into Agoura October 1981, before cityhood. We were involved in the early development of Agoura Hills and why we succeeded from Los Angeles County. A little bit about my background, however. I was raised in the San Fernando Valley. I graduated Grant High School. I got my master's and bachelor of arts in geography, specialization of animal, plant, political, and, and medical geography. I'm fluent in three, four languages, including Swahili, French, Spanish, and maybe English. I went on to become a medical geographer and went on to medical school. And I graduated Wayne State in Detroit, came back to Los Angeles. I was an intern in internal medicine at Los Angeles County USC Hospital and then became a resident of neurology at LA County USC Hospital. We then moved to Agoura Hills, my ex-husband and I, and we raised all three of our children there. I have three children, a son 18 who just started Sonoma State. I have a middle son, I have a middle child, 22, who's in the audience, Harrison, who has autism, but he has come a long way from the beginnings of his education and he went through all the school systems, Loopin Hills, White Oaks, Sumac, A-Rite, and Agoura High School, and now is close to graduating Agoura High School, so I've been an advocate and involved with him through the years. And he also was the captain of the cross-country team of Agoura High School in 2008, 2007, excuse me. I have a daughter who's 26, who just got her master's in occupational therapy and she'll be helping the handicapped and the young child with problems. I've raised these children on my own the last 11 years. I'm also an advocate and advisor for the American Academy of Neurology. I'm a Palatucci Leadership Advisor, which is, there's only 40 neurologists out of 21,000 in, in the world that have this title. And my focus is Alzheimer's disease, early screening, identification of patients with memory loss, and have collaborated with a fellow neurologist in Tuscaloosa, Alabama to form cognitive dynamics. And we're bringing art therapy and music therapy into the homes of Alzheimer's patients to help their memory and their behavior. We also presented an art poster at the International Conference of Alzheimer's Disease in France this year and we, we did quite well. So why do I want to become a member of the city council? I, I was here before the city became a city. I also changed, was instrumental in changing three laws in the city, including the dark skies ordinance based on my husband's observatory in the backyard to protect the night skies. The grandfather clause to keep animal keeping in Old Agoura because homes were, new homes were encroaching on existing homes and the setback at that time was 28 feet from the property line and 35 feet was the distance for keeping livestock. And, and the other law was, I have llamas and alpacas, so including that into the animal code, which Joan Yagivone spent hours figuring out how many llamas and alpacas and horses and sheep would go into a half acre.
Merrill, I'm going to interrupt you and time's up. Time is up.
Anyway, thank you all for coming. I do want your support.
Well, we're definitely fair. We let everybody run over on the, on the time, but we're going to try now to stay within the one minute and get a little tighter on stuff. We are now going to start with the first question and as we rotate through the starts, I'll tell everybody who's the start is, and in this case, it is John Edelston. The question is on environmental issues. In general, what are your views on the city's environmental standards and what changes would you make, if any, and why?
One minute, okay. I believe that the city is currently very, very environmentally, environmental friendly. There's always room to make changes and adjustments, but we implemented a environmental responsibility committee two or three years ago. We did a new process with the street overlay on Thousand Oaks Boulevard using a cold grinding and relaying process which eliminated the need for you to put the old material into landfills. We have implemented a water treatment system for the, one of the streams using ozone, which has turned a very polluted-looking stream into one in which has fish. We've expanded wildlife corridors. We have done a lot to protect three blue line streams that go through the city. We have recycling programs including electronic waste and we work with both Calabasas and with Westlake Village in order to use our resources together so that our citizens can have access to theirs, theirs can have access to ours.
Thank you. Elise.
You ready?
Yep.
Well, that was a surprise question, so I already gave you that in my intro, but let me, let me go back to some of this. There's always things we can do. With all due respect to Dr. Platzer, we do not have a dark skies ordinance in Agoura Hills. We have lighting standards and guidelines, but no dark skies ordinance, but I do agree that we need one. The wildlife corridor, we, we really need to protect that. It's, there's been some chatter about some funding, not from the city, from the federal government, from the Department of Transportation, et cetera, and we really want to make sure that that tunnel goes in. We want to fight hard for Chesbrough Meadow to be designated as open space. This is very important, both for the wildlife corridor, et cetera. In terms of environment, let me just put it out there, I would not have supported the high-density housing development east of Chesbrough on the south side of the freeway. It's too close to the wildlife corridor and it's, the density is too high. We need to make sure that we don't follow in that footsteps. We've got to have better planning for our environment. Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, it's been a long time since somebody on the council's been active. I would like that job.
Thank you.
My background is in biogeography and I've been an environmentalist for a number of years. I think we could always do better. I see some problems. I recycle cans, I go to one center on Thousand Oaks and Keenan and that poor guy is overworked and many times, there's lines that are out the door on the street. We should have, we should have more recycling areas. Our creeks need to be cleared up. Our trees need to be trimmed up where there's walking paths along Chesbrough and horse trails that need to be cleaned up. I'm a doctor, I, I see patients throwing their prescription pills and toilets and garbage cans and we need to have a better way of disposing the medication. And I think we just need to educate the, the public. I personally take my husband, my, my, my children's notes and I write to office and basically write on the back of it and then recycle it again, so.
And Sue.
My husband and I, as retired people from our full-time careers, have taken to venturing out further in our city and found that Chesbrough Park was a beautiful place for us to be walking. While we've been doing that, we've also noticed that there are some areas there that could use some tender, loving care. Tomorrow, I have an appointment with Woody Schmeck and the public relations person, Lauren, at the National Park Service to discuss the possibility of creating what I would call park watches where concerned and interested neighbors who use park space would be the watchful eye since the national funding is down and we would contribute as a community to working with that. The recycling containers in parks are nonexistent and I would promote that that would be happening. I also look at our parks as beautifully maintained, although, again, city service is not, the funding is not there for what we used to have and the ability for people in our neighborhoods who utilize those parks to be a part of a system.
Thank you.
That oversees our parks.
Okay, we're going to try a little harder to stay within the minutes, so I don't need to interrupt, but our next question round starts with Elise. It is on border areas between the HOA and the city properties. There are a number of areas around the city that are visible and almost feel like part of the public portion of the city, but are actually on HOA property or in HOA responsibility. For example, along Keenan, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and Reyes Adobe, there are all these situations. There's a two-part question here. What do you think about the cost-sharing responsibilities between the- What do you think about the cost-sharing responsibilities between the city and the HOAs for maintaining these areas? And do you think that there should be a minimum or consistency standard in the border areas so that there is greater consistency between the different HOAs in, in the city? Does that make sense?
Now, can you repeat the second part of it?
Do you think that there should be minimum or consistency standards in the border areas along these streets that are shared with the HOAs so that there's a greater consistency as you drive up the street in the city, along one of these streets that we've just mentioned?
I see. Okay, well, there's several public and private maintenance issues in Agora Hills. For example, Morrison Ranch is taking care of, or is responsible for taking care of some of the medians down Kenan and Thousand Oaks, and yet it's, they're public medians. We have Reyes Adobe Parkway is private land, and the city's not allowed to take care of that. Lake Lindero has the, some of the homes are subject to the HOA, some are not. My feeling is, is that to do this fairly and efficiently, we need to have a comprehensive study of how to resolve this issue. We can't step in and say that we're going to take care of the maintenance for one homeowners' association and then not take care of it for the next HOA's thing. It's all about fairness. There's big legal hurdles to overcome in doing this, but I am supportive of a comprehensive study. I think it needs to be done. I, I agree that it may not be completely fair that homeowners' association are taking care of the landscaping and the medians that all of us are here to enjoy.
Thank you. Meryl.
I, it would be nice, in the ideal world, that the homeowners' association and the city can share costs. I think in the long run, it would probably save dollars in deter traffic and other impedances that may occur. I personally have shared an office with a physician, an allergist, for twenty-six years. I do not like all of the conditions, but it has worked out. My profit's up, my overhead is down, and I share employees, and it seems to have worked out. So it, you know, I think revenue always is a problem. I think there should be a study, but I think in the long run, it would probably be worthwhile all around.
Thank you. Sue.
I understand there has been ongoing discussion between the city and Morrison HOA regarding the median, and a request that the city then be involved with maintaining a portion of the median that they're responsible for. And of course, then there are legal disputes that enter into that. Along Reyes Adobe, the homeowner actually owns the property between their fence and the sidewalk, and they're required to maintain that area. And the city at one time proposed a plan that would create uniformity, although it was not accepted by all homeowners, and there are not homeowners' associations connected with the two residential areas adjacent to Reyes Adobe. I would suggest that a neighborhood representative committee, or this community council, would sit and discuss Reyes Adobe, Morrison, and all the medians that are maintained by the city, and then ultimately, an attractive, uniform plan that would include drought-tolerant plants, which would also cut water costs and be a saving to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Edelston.
Thank you. We are a diverse community, and I think it's important, as you listen to those of us who are up on the dais here, that you not listen to just campaign promises, because what turns into reality is something which is very, very different. For example, with the medians that Morrison Ranch maintains, there's a development agreement with the County of Los Angeles before the city became a city. It is a current, if I understand it correctly, legal obligation for Morrison to maintain those medians. If it is not, my position is, I think both parties should brief it, put it in front of a Rena judge or a judge, and whatever the decision is of that arbitrator is, should be what is followed. The city is precluded by law from annulment, meaning private annulment. We cannot, as a city, benefit privately, either organizations or individuals. So the city cannot take up the maintenance of those roadways, even if we wanted to, unless the development agreement were to be changed.
Thank you. Okay. We're really going to try to stay within a minute this next time. The next question is on building and development, specifically the process. Many would say that there's a perception that the city of Agora Hills is difficult to do business with, especially for anyone who wants to build, whether it's residents, business, or developers. First, do you believe that that's the case? Second, do you believe that the process for people that want to build is working well, or would you like to see something different? The first one to answer this question is...
Meryl. Yes, I think it is a reality. I live in Old Agora. My neighbor next to me is trying to modify his home, extended floor space. It's already been two years. He lives in a trailer. He pays mortgage on the trailer. He has excessive permits, reviews, he can't hook up to the sewer system, and it's a nightmare. The project has already cost him several hundred thousands of dollars. I think we need to cut some of these excessive costs and bureaucracy and get people in their homes, especially in our dire economic times. And also commercially, I've been over the other side of the hill, and people say you live in Agora. They've had fast food places, and they say they bought a fast food place, the sign had to be modified, and they lost their highway frontage, and they left, they went elsewhere. So we need to streamline the building processes and reduce the bureaucracy so people can stay in our area.
Time. Thank you. Oops, one second. Okay, and Sue.
Well, speaking with residents, business owners, and developers, they did speak about their experience working with city staff. Some are satisfied, and others state that their experience has not been user-friendly. So creating a culture and climate of assistance and support for those who go through the process, either as a first-time builder or someone who's remodeling their home, would be something that should be a standard practice. I have a brother who is a contractor, who lives in the city, and he said his preference is that the owner pulled the permits versus the contractor going in to do the work and work with the city. And he believes that when the property owner does this, that if they are dissatisfied, they have more clout in sharing their dissatisfaction than someone who might be the contractor doing the work. Our city staff and council have gone to great lengths to develop a general plan, which zones particular areas for use, specific use, although we cannot mandate which way a developer chooses to build.
Time. And Mr. Edelston.
Thank you. It would be naive to say that problems do not exist. They do, and some of us work very hard at trying to get those thresholds lowered. There are different problems with residential development as there is with commercial. The city has established high standards as a result of the founding of the city, and I think that part of the issue is that we're trying to find a balance between those high standards and enabling both residences and commercial businesses to, to do business. Most recently, we began to examine our rules, and one of the changes that have been made is to landscaping and parking and sign requirements. I'd like to continue to see a change in the culture of our staff that would enable current businesses to be able to do better and do more, businesses who want to come into the community to have less of a threshold to have to get over in order to be successful.
Thank you. Elise.
Well, I have a slightly different view. Perceptions are hard to change. This perception is not a reality in Agora Hills. If you take a look around, there's no shortage of development in our city, and I don't think we should ever, ever apologize for having high standards for development out here. In the nineteen nineties, Councilmember Ed Corodore and Dennis Weber created an Economic Development Committee, and their exact promotion was that Agora Hills is a great place to do business because of its high standards. When I just recently went to where Bill Tucker had the opening of his remodeled Wizzen Center, it's absolutely fabulous. He met our standards. There was a little grumbling along the way, but I saw him the other night, he couldn't be prouder. It's absolutely, came out beautiful. He's happy as can be, and all of Agora is going to benefit from it. It's a beautiful center. With regard to residential, we've passed ordinances, basically to avoid mansionization and to protect your privacy from second stories of your neighbors.
Thank you. Our next question, our next round of questions starts with Sue. This is on development projects. If you can answer this as quickly as possible, it'd be great. Did you ever take public positions, or did you publicly support or support yourself regarding some of the local projects? In other words, did you specifically support or were against the following projects? Rio Farm Development at Liberty Canyon, Shuey Project on Ladyface Mountain, the Heschel Project in Chesbrough Meadow, and beyond these three, were there any developments that you think could have been handled better than you wanted to, or that you want to call out in some way?
I did not take public positions on any of the projects. As I look at them and view them, I, as a resident, like those of you who maybe didn't take a public position, I do know and have some information about the different projects. Many of them are scaled down from what could have been there, and in working with the city, there was quite some number of years and long processes involved to scale some of the projects down. And as you sit looking at some of these projects, recognizing the size and scope, I think then, recognizing now that they are not the size that they initially could have been, we're looking at something that looks very different and more in keeping with what our city decided to approve.
Thank you. John.
Thank you. You mentioned three projects. I supported two. I was opposed to one in the size that it was. I supported the Rio Farm project. It was a reduction in, I first should say that this property owner had the right to build, just because there is empty space does not mean it is open space. The project was significantly modified. It was a thirty percent reduction in the number of units. The, there were no two, there were no one-story properties, and now there are, I think, thirty or forty percent of the properties are one-story. And the landscaping was, that was agreed to, was an increase from immature to a ten-year maturity. The Shuey Project, I also voted for because it is entitled. It is higher than I would have liked it, but there is a wildlife corridor that is lower down that was more, a sensitive wildlife corridor. My feeling was it was better to approve it with the, where it is now. And with Heschel, I did not agree with the project with having eight hundred and some students, and did not support that.
Thank you. Elise.
Sorry, hang on.
Yep.
With all due respect to Councilwoman Edelston, the only wildlife corridor that we have in the city of Agora Hills is on Liberty Canyon. The Shuey Project came up in front of me on the planning commission of a renewal of the permit, so I didn't examine the entire project, but I did not support the renewal because I felt that the, it was too high on the mountain. It could be visible from Agora Hills, and guess what? It is visible from Agora Hills. And in walking in the neighborhoods, people are complaining about that development because they can see it from their backyards. They're not happy about it. The Shuey, for those of you who don't know, is on Reyes Adobe, where Reyes Adobe dead ends at Agora Road. It's office complex, and it's quite high up. If I had been on, if it had come in front of me on the planning commission, I would have preferred to have it closer to Agora Road. I've spoke about the Heschel, the Chesbrough Meadows. You, I think you know my position, because I am going to fight hard to have that as designated as open space. And with the Rio Farm, which is the one east on the 101, I've already told you that I, it's too high density and too close to the wildlife corridor for my taste.
Thank you.
I did speak against the Heschel property. I thought it was the wrong place for the school. I thought it would have endangered the students, especially during fires, a fire corridor. I also was opposed to the redevelopment project on the Agora High School grounds. I have nothing against the low, moderate-income housing or the need for that housing, but it was a wrong place. There's two high schools there, Driver Avenue, which is a substandard road, a performance center, nursery schools, and I, as a doctor, would not like to live on top of a hospital or a teacher living on top of a school. I thought a better location would have been Gateway Church area with shuttles. I also oppose the Agora car wash that they wanted to put on Chesbrough and Driver. Again, car wash in an equestrian community and a substandard road was not the right choice, and it didn't go through.
Thank you. Our next round starts with John. It's on the redevelopment agency. Now that the city has chosen not to participate in the program, what does the future hold? There's a number of properties around the city that would have fallen under the RDA. What would you like to see happen with those properties? Is there something new or different that can be done with them? Feel free to include your thoughts on workforce housing near Agora High School or other locations around the city, and how they might integrate into this. And you can do that all in one minute.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting.
Yeah.
First of all, I think it's important to understand that the city is under state law, and the city council members take an oath of office to uphold state law. There's a requirement to build affordable housing, workforce housing. This is not Section Eight housing. The project at Agora Hills High School was very tastefully done, and it was a way in which we could also support the school system. We were able to channel, in the last two years, nine hundred thousand dollars to the school system in the general fund, in their general fund, by leasing that property. We are going to be challenged with the elimination of the RDA because it will put us in the hole approximately three hundred thousand dollars a year, and we have to find a way to balance a budget, being in the hole, three hundred thousand dollars a year. I would disagree with Elise Buckley-Weber in that designating the, the old Heschel property as open space would potentially necessitate the city to, to get rid of a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price, and the city can ill afford to do that and to designate that space as open space.
Thank you. And Elise.
The future of the RDAs with our courts. The Agora Hills RDA, though, was really successful. It channeled, it funneled money to our schools. Last year, it was about six hundred, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It, it was projected to be about four hundred and twenty this year, I believe. It funded our interchanges, which was a great help. It, it's just that it was going to cost the city about one point five million dollars as an initial payment and three hundred thousand dollars per year to maintain an RDA under the new state structure. And frankly, I agree with the council that that's just not worth it. We couldn't afford to do that. So the future is ours to find out. Regarding affordable housing, we are, the state does mandate affordable housing in our city. I work, as a planning commissioner, I worked on the housing element, and we were, the revision of the housing element, and we were certified for compliance by the state. I'd like to see the affordable housing on the south side of the 101, and I'd like there to be a preference for teachers, sheriffs, and our public servants.
Thank you. Meryl.
I think it's unfortunate that the city of Agora Hills lost the redevelopment money. It did support the schools. I think most of the citizens in Agora did not know what redevelopment agency meant, that it was for rebuilding blighted areas. There's a lot of people who are losing their homes. We should look at maybe buying those homes, if it's possible, and using that for low, moderate-income housing. I think there is the property south of the freeway, Gateway Church area, which may be a site for low, moderate-income housing. I think we should also look at our freeway. It's blighted, and that we should help with vegetation and monument signs and attract businesses in our area as a source of revenue.
And Sue.
Our city council decided to not be a part of the RDA, and like Elise, agree that spending that over one million dollars would not have been financially feasible. The fate of the RDA does rest with the California Supreme Court, and there should be a decision by mid-January of two thousand and twelve. It does appear if the RDA goes away, we would not have the funds that would remain in our community to build affordable or workforce housing. If the city was interested in building the affordable housing outside of any RDA, the funding would have to come from another source. So it would be questionable then, that anything around Agora High School could continue. I'm in agreement with Elise. I could see workforce housing south of the 101. And also, Agora's RDA did benefit our city very much with support of our And also, Agoura's RDA did benefit our city very much with support of our schools and completion of road projects.
Thank you. Our next round starts with Elise. It's a question on the budget. The city of Agoura Hills has had some challenges on the budget side for the last year or two, a little more. And while the city has done much better than many in the state, it has a different financial situation than its neighboring cities. What do you think about the budget? And in broad stroke terms, what would you like to see change on the revenue side or on the expense side? And if you'd like to see changes, how do you see the city getting there?
Well, first, I believe that the city's in good financial shape. We've had balanced budgets for the last five to eight years. We have very strong reserves. We've been very successful, the city's been very successful in getting grant funding for our interchanges. Our city leaders have conducted strategic planning. They saved money. They saw the future. We were going to need a new rec center. They saved the money, and when the opportunity came knocking, they were able to grab up the parcel of land right behind City Hall. We have a small, efficient city staff. We have a beautiful but modest city hall. Our city employees have reasonable salaries, and city council people still get the same $300 a month that they did back in the 1980s. For revenues, I'm all about the buy-local program. I'd like to see a directory put out by the city categorized by goods and services. I'd like to get them involved in social networking so it could be on the line as well.
Thank you. Meryl?
I think we could do better. We have fixed debt. We have the debt of over $600,000. We have fixed costs for the government, security, education. I think we should streamline our government. There's some assistance to assistance, and there's a duplicity of staff. I think we should get some use of the citizens and see how they can volunteer and help. And I think we need to attract more local businesses and give incentives such as maybe rebates of buying locally. So, I mean, we could be creative and reinvent ourselves.
Thank you. Sue?
The city has been successful bringing in a balanced budget over the past many years. There are monies in reserve which do enable us to, when an opportunity is there, to purchase a property, which is most unusual. We do pay our bills on time. That's good. The Business Task Force was charged with creating a stop-local campaign, and that message needs to continue within our community as it brings in revenue, and that's a way to increase our revenue. The Agoura, Westlake, and Thousand Oaks cities are working together to create a tourism bureau, marketing the cities as a destination and also an area that has access to the Santa Monica Mountains, the beaches, national parks, would generate more revenue. And that revenue would come from people who would end up staying in our hotels, eat our food, access our restaurants, purchase gas, and enjoy what we have to offer in Agoura Hills.
Thank you. John?
Well, I guess I should be the one to say you're welcome for eight years of balanced budgets. Thank you for acknowledging that. We are a well-managed city. In fact, we had an increase in our credit rating during the last four years during the recession, which is highly unusual, but we are very prudent with our money. I think what we need to do is, we do keep a lid on expenses. We need to look at how we can increase revenues. One of the ways is through the Business Task Force, which I was part of the formation of. We need to, and we are working with the cities of Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, the Park Service, both the national and the state, in the formation of a tourism bureau so that the hotel rooms, which lie more vacant during the weekend, can be used so that people can, as Sue said, in restaurants in the city, buy their guests in the city, shop in the city, but be able to go to the outlet malls or go to the beach and use the Santa Monica Mountains as well as the King Gillette Ranch and Amundson Ranch.
Thank you. Our next question starts with Meryl. It is about the Chesbrough interchange and traffic concerns. In 2012 and 13, the city of Agoura Hills will commence construction on the Palo Comato Canyon Road Interchange, more commonly known as the Chesbrough Interchange. And this comes on the heels of considerable work done both at the Canaan and Reyes Adobe interchanges. What do you think the city has learned from both the Canaan and Reyes Adobe projects that can be applied to the Chesbrough project? And what traffic concerns do you see around the city, and what are your thoughts on them?
Well, I live nearby that area. The Chesbrough interchange and upcoming work would be a nightmare. The area expansion will uproot some businesses south of the freeway, and even if it's wide, it will go into a substandard street of Driver. It's already a bottleneck. I think we need to look at the arterial route presently. It takes me 15 minutes sometimes to cross two streets to go to work, which is the majority of my time it would take to go to Woodland Hills. We have two high schools in that area. We have nursery schools. We have equestrian community. I think we first need to look at our traffic flow before engaging into that Chesbrough exchange.
Oops. Sorry. Go ahead.
I think we're different from the other areas such as Canaan and Reyes Adobe. We're just a different ball of wax in that area.
Thank you. And Sue?
Over the past eight years, our city has worked with Caltrans and the Federal Highway Administration to change and update the Canaan and Reyes Adobe interchanges. A project study reported identified deficiencies and future issues at the Chesbrough Interchange, which the city says will be resolved by changes made to that interchange. As someone looking from the outside in, the city and Caltrans seem to work well together to minimally impact or inconvenience our drivers when work was done at Canaan and Reyes Adobe. I happen to live in between the two, Reyes Adobe and Canaan, and took the route of Canaan every morning to work, wondering, when were they doing all of that work? Because I was not as impacted as I thought I might be. So a continuation of city staff working with the school district, because yes, Agoura High School would have more issues than possibly what they have now, Old Agoura Homeowners Association, and the area businesses to address the concerns regarding the impact to the residents, the businesses, and high school staff and students is what I would recommend.
Thank you. You guys have the longest sentences sometimes.
There's a lot to get in. Before you start, Neil, was your question only on the interchange or was it beyond the interchange?
You're welcome to expand it beyond the interchange and talk about traffic in general.
Okay. I'll start with the interchange, and I do believe it's a dangerous interchange. I understand what Meryl is saying in terms of it being in a different area of the city, equestrian and just different, but it's also a dangerous interchange. If you get off the freeway at Chesbrough and you're going north, you know that traffic coming around the curve from the south up is a blind thought, and it does not meet Caltrans' requirements. So we have been working for a number of years in both looking at the design and actually being able to perhaps do some scaling back with now that the school is not going to be built, and what's going to be there will range either between nothing and open space to something very moderate, so that the amount of the interchange is much reduced. The city has spent a lot of time and understands the issue of short-term inconvenience, but understands also the need for the long-term improvement. We have in the past done a very effective job in staging construction on the other bridges to minimize negative impacts, as described by Sue. We'll continue to do that with that bridge as well.
Thank you.
Question about transportation.
And Elise?
Well, I've been poking my nose around about the status of the Chesbrough Bridge, and I've heard everything from it's a done deal to, oh, no, that's not happening now that Heschel School's not going in. So as a planning commissioner of this city, if I can't find out information about it, I have to assume that the community has not been involved, there's been no workshops, and nobody's given their input on this subject. And I don't think that's a good idea. I think that if there is a public safety issue, the city would be remiss in not making improvements to the Chesbrough Bridge. However, the Chesbrough Bridge is in Old Agoura, and I believe that any improvements to that bridge need to maintain the style and character of Old Agoura. With regards to traffic, yes, there's traffic, and as a planning commissioner, when a project comes in front of us, that's one of our key concerns, is we need to make sure before we allow high-volume retail in that the traffic impact is not going to be severe on our residents.
Thank you. This next round starts with Sue. It's on schools. What do you, schools?
Okay.
You know one or two things about schools. It's on schools. What do you see as the city's role in our schools? For example, what relationship do you believe the city should have to the schools? And what type of support should the city give the schools financially? Finally, what would you like to see Agoura Hills do in conjunction with the other cities within the Los Verges School District as far as a four-cities agreement or some of the other types of joint ventures that can be done between cities?
As a 30-plus-year educator with the Los Angeles Unified School District, I know that business is no longer as usual within a school district. And looking for outside support and assistance is what every school district and schools have been doing for a number of years now. I do know that with the different councils, Agoura, Calabasas, Hidden Hills, and Westlake, they have been meeting with the school district, and some years ago, it was determined that the district could use some tech support. All of the cities agreed to a four-year agreement to assist in this area, and that agreement will need to be revisited. I would encourage representative council members and school district staff to continue to meet to understand the school district's needs. From these meetings, it could be determined then what monies could be directed towards the school district. The city does pay for crossing guards. They also have partnerships, bless you, with the District for Tennis Courts at Agoura High School, and I think there are other ways to be bringing in money.
Thank you. And John?
First, I was on the City Schools Committee when I first came on the council, and through that process evolved a four-cities supporting the school program in which the city of Agoura Hills provided $250,000 to the school in technology grants. Also, when we did have the RDA, we were able to, and Elise, it was actually a little bit more, this year and last year, put in about $1.25 million through the RDA to the schools. And that was something that was very beneficial. But we need to find other options, other alternatives. I think the foundation is important. We need to find ways to support it. I'd like to work with the Chamber of Commerce and bringing a business coalition together to support the foundation and also the schools, but support Measure K, I think, is important. And we need to find other alternatives and opportunities to support the schools. We've supported the Juvenile Intervention Team, Crossing Guards, Grad Night, the music program, tennis courts, et cetera.
Thank you. I was getting worried for a second. Elise?
I believe that the relationship between the school district and the city could use some strengthening. There's been a good relationship, but I would support it being strengthened, and I feel that I'm the person who can bring these groups together. I'm already working with the T.H.E. Foundation. It's a great foundation. I see it as just a vital part of the future of our schools. Zeonah Friedlander and her team are doing an excellent job, and I'm glad to be part of it from the first kickoff to attending the board meetings. It's a great way to bring the community together. Like I said earlier, the success of our schools is for this entire community to be invested in the schools. I'm friendly now with the school board. I've been to their meetings. I would like to have a closer and more regular involvement with them and get them involved with the residents so that there's a good working relationship between our residents and the school board. Agoura Hills is a member of the Council of Governments. They have paving and landscaping partnerships, all cost-saving for our city, and I would like to see those continued.
Thank you. And Meryl?
I think the city should have an important role with the education. Education is our city and Canejo Valley's future. All my three children were educated through the Los Verges Unified School District. I have a son who has autism, and he has done quite well. I think we should cooperate with the other cities, and my son actually benefited from the Los Verges Educational Fund this summer. It was a little bit costly, but I think it's a good way of attracting students and bringing money into the system and actually help with their schooling during the year so they do not have so many courses. So I think that's a good program.
Thank you. This next round starts with John. It's on experience. What do you see about your experiences that would make you a good city council member? What is your current profession, and who do you work for in this position? Is it a management position? In other words, do you manage other people in the position? And what skills from your current or past professions can you apply towards the city council? In other words, how is your work experience going to help you in being a good council member? Feel free to speak to your educational background, your credentials, your associations, and your community work as well. Basically, what gives you a good background for being a councilperson?
Thank you. Now, I've been a city council member for eight years, and I think I've demonstrated my ability directly through that interaction. I want to, and I've answered a lot of the question that you're asking and other questions. So I think that the keys here are knowledge, experience, and expertise. I have had a business in which I had 40 employees. I have been doing consulting with large institutions, doing, as I said, strategic visioning and budgeting. I think being in a city council position, very important is decision-making and situation analysis. It's really going through a process of understanding what the findings are, what your limitations are, what your roles and responsibilities are. I think that that is recognized in the endorsements that I've received, including the majority of the city council, the majority of the planning commission, all five members of the Board of Education, many school volunteers in leadership positions, as well as our county supervisors of Yaroslavsky. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise?
Well, what I would bring to the city council is my experience on the planning commission for the past six years. I'm presently the vice chair. I've learned how to review and understand site plans. I know about land use and planning. I'm experienced with our municipal code. I've worked on the update of the general plan, which again is like basically the Bible of our city. This is just a disc, but it's hundreds of pages. It's the vision of our founders. I know about the right type of development for Agoura Hills and supported the Hilton Foundation lead certification. I know about the wrong kind of development for Agoura Hills, and we've talked about those already. Have I been a tough planning commissioner? Yes, you bet I have. We have very high standards in this city, and again, we should never apologize for having such high standards. I think it's benefited the city all around. You got more landscaping, you get prettier buildings, good setback requirements by being a good planning commissioner. I will bring my attorney skills as a lawyer, mediator, negotiator.
Thank you. Meryl?
Okay. My experience of living in the city before cityhood and the beginnings of the city and seeing how the city has matured. I'm a physician. I'm running a sole practice for the last 26 years in surviving. I am the mother of three children who have all gone through the school district. I am an advocate and advisor for the Marion Academy Neurology and have been on the Hill in Washington in front of Congress and Senate and legislative aides with issues such as funds for National Institute of Health, brain trauma patients from Iraq and Afghanistan wars, and Alzheimer's. I'm also part of the art therapy and music therapy program for Alzheimer's. I live, breathe this city, and I'm a citizen's advocate, and I'm the voice of the people, and I've always been that way since I was day one.
Thank you. Sue?
From formal and informal involvement in our city for the past 25 years, I do know that these experiences will assist and guide my work as a council member. Connecting with city staff once a month for eight years and knowing how to work with a group to build consensus, being part of a team lends itself well to the position of city council. I have been a parent, either a team parent, coach's wife, coach, on approximately 140 sports teams. Yes, I actually added all of them up, and it enabled me to know many of our residents, families, and community members. Also, able to go out and be a self-appointed ambassador for Agoura Hills as we traveled from city to city, supporting our children and their teams. Active listening. I enjoy the process of engaging with people and listening to their concerns, and I think that's critical for a council member. Commitment or overly committed. I live both, and sometimes that could be an issue. I live both, and sometimes that's -- could be an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next round starts with Elise. It's on technology infrastructure. Like Westlake Village, Agoura Hills residents and businesses have relatively poor internet options, and in places, cellular coverage is poor as well. What do you see as the issues surrounding the city's technology infrastructure, and how do you see this affecting residents and local businesses? To be clear, this is an infrastructure question about residents and businesses being able to use internet cellular television. It's not about the technologies that the city uses to serve the residents that are out there. It's about infrastructure.
I have to be honest, I'm not savvy enough to really understand the question, so let me take a stab at the wireless telecommunications facilities. I think that's what we're talking about here. I did not support the wireless tower at Lindero Middle School. The city council, it did pass the planning commission, even though I didn't pass it, it went up to the city council. They imposed a ban on wireless telecommunications, which I supported. In return, what we've come up with is an ordinance, a really good wireless telecommunications ordinance. It -- you have to have a CUP. Every provider needs to come in. It's a four-tier approach. I won't get into the details, but you know, the bottom line is it protects our residential areas and our open space. I'd like to see a more proactive and interactive website. I'd like to see the city get involved in blogging and sharing and social media to disseminate information to our residents and to support our local businesses.
Thank you. Meryl?
Okay. Internet, Wi-Fi, and technology is our future. We need better cellular service. There's some areas where there's dropped calls. We need more competition other than time order, and you have to package your Wi-Fi with television and phones, and it can be quite costly. I would probably propose Wi-Fi cafes such as in Europe and Japan. It's a way of, let's say it's Starbucks, of social interaction and doing business. I think we need to educate people on how to use computers and technology. It's going to be cumbersome initially, but in the end, it will be quite productive. I think there should be real-time between the city council meetings and planning commission meetings and the people so they can answer back on a real-time basis rather than outdated information.
Thank you. Sue?
Some business owners working in our city's office buildings and their homes have experienced some intermittent and inadequate service, be it telephone cable or wireless. And since that would impact their ability to operate and manage a business, I see a connection to our business task force and surveying our businesses to understand the depth and the breadth of lost calls, cable issues, wireless concerns. I do know, we have a son purchased a condo at -- by Liberty Canyon. He has intermittent cell service. Sometimes in the Oldagora area also, there's a break-in service. So surveying also our residents to find out the extent of the situation would bring understanding, further understanding, to our city, although it is a small contract city and has no utility services that it provides. So all of it is private sector, and I think, though, we can work with our businesses and residents to determine the situation.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. Technology is changing the way in which we work and live in many different ways. These changes will continue, and I don't think that they're a bad idea. The city has adopted when feasible, technology, mostly trailing-edge rather than leading-edge. I think a part of that is because of the cost of leading-edge technology. We don't have a huge general fund and a large budget. I would, though, like to see the city become a Wi-Fi everywhere city. If you go down the street of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and look up at the -- some of the light fixtures, you'll find little antennas on them. We passed several years ago the approval for a company to install these relay, wireless relay systems up TO and down Canaan. It requires, though, a private company to populate it. We funded the school district with a technology fund of $250,000. I think the city needs to follow through within the city and fund more technology-capable opportunities. Last thing is, we do livestream Wi-Fi to -- or web streaming to city council meetings and planning commission meetings.
Thank you. We're going to try to do one quick round here, and that's about all we have time for, so do what you can to answer this quickly, I'm sorry. This starts with Meryl. It's about parks and youth sports. What do you see as the ways to improve parks and youth sports and activities in the area? And how do you see the new parks and rec site playing a role? And do you see ways of working with the regional sports park in Westlake Village? Pick any piece of that, just do a quick answer if you can.
I think there's a lot of different parks in our city. I'm surrounded by Chesbrough National Park, Agoura Park, and Chumash. And I, for example, at Chesbrough, we need to clean up the trees, the waterways, and more viable equestrian trails and pedestrian trails. The Agoura Park, which is a equestrian park, needs bridges and safety for the riders and the horse -- the horses and the pedestrians. And Chumash is completely different. The Recreation Center in Westlake, I think will -- we should be involved with that. I think it's a great project.
Thank you. Sue?
Looking at what is more current in park design, there are shade canopies that can cover the toddler play areas. And yes, they do cost money, although if we could provide that in one of our parks so parents, grandparents could have the option to take their children to that park, I think would be a great improvement. Other cities have one designated park with a splash pad, and some of you have visited either Calabasas or Oak Park to take your children there. I'd like to keep one within our city. I'd also like to add circuit training stations in one of our parks. Many of us utilize the space at our parks, but taking signage and some bench and being able to do something more than what we're making up, it's nice to have some direction sometimes. There, youth sports, I think our city is filled, overflowing with youth sports, and access and availability for families and your children to participate in them is wonderful.
John?
Okay. One, I'd like to start with looking at the opportunity for Parks District. This was something that Ed Corodore brought up a number of years ago, would allow for a greater regionalization in looking at what the park needs are. We have added a new park in the last four years. That's the excess land from the Yerba Buena Elementary School that the city purchased. One of the intents was to do actually a circuit training there, and I'd like to see that pursued. I think regionalizing the parks and working with our neighboring cities is important. There is going to be a new huge park system in Westlake. A lot of Agoura Hills residents are going to be using it. I'd like to see how we can work more together. We've also engaged in some private-public partnerships in improving the parks. A couple of years ago, maybe more than a couple of years ago, Bank of America worked together with the City of Agoura Hills, and about 40 Bank of America employees, along with their money, beautified the Morrison Park. Also, doing more opportunities where we moved tennis courts at Agoura High School rather than taking up park space at Morrison Park.
Thank you. Elise?
Well, I love our parks. I think they're great. We have dog waste bag dispensaries. We have nice, fairly new signage. We've planted trees over the years. I say congratulations to the city and keep up the good work. The one improvement I'd like to see is recycle bins in the park. The real question is the open space in the Santa Monica Mountains, and I think we need to take an active role in protecting both the open space and to get involved in the Santa Monica Mountains. We need to naturalize our creek beds and with the long-term goal of having a meandering trail along the creek sides. Nature Park at Lindero Creek, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see that happen. I'd like to be the active member of the Santa Monica -- for the city, to be the representative of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservatory. My kids played AYSO, WAGS, ABYBA, and APB. I was a team parent, a coach, or an assistant coach. I know what it takes to make those organizations work. They're fantastic. What I'd like to help is the Leave the Fields Clean campaign, and again, put recycle bins on the fields.
Thank you. We're now going to move into closing statements. Each candidate has two minutes. Sue, you're the first one. You're welcome to do it from there or up at the podium. It's up to you. You want to stretch? Okay. I think everybody wants to stretch.
First, a very special thank you to Neil Ticton from Westlake Revelations, Bruce Stein with the Morrison Homeowners Association, and also the PFA board members who decided to bring all of this together. Most appreciative of what they've done. I'm grateful for the assistance from my supporters and proud and humbled to be a part of your lives. I come as a mother, a wife, a sister, a 30-year educator, including positions as a teacher, counselor, middle and high school administrator, assistant principal and principal. Most importantly, though, I do come as a neighbor of yours, either in close proximity or a few miles away. We share community experiences and the rhythm of our city. The service gene and a love for our city and its residents is deeply embedded in me, wanting to ensure that future generations inherit this community and what we know to be the attributes of our city are other reasons I want to serve on the council. We are one city with many voices, and I would like to be the voice that represents your concerns. Using some proven skills that transfer well from my profession to city council, and they include leadership, team building, mediation, compliance, management of budgets and personnel, facilitation, commitment, ethical and legal sense, and trustworthiness, I would like to be given the opportunity to serve you and serve you well. Thank you.
You want to do it from there?
I'll sit here.
Do it from there. Okay.
It's been really both a pleasure and an honor to serve as a member of the Agoura Hills City Council the past eight years. I've enjoyed my experience in working with the other city council members, the planning commissioners, the city staff, and working with the schools. And I've looked -- I've really enjoyed my experience in working with the schools, working with the Board of Education, superintendent, the teachers. My wife just retired as a teacher from 20 years in the school district, and I look forward to the next four years in doing the same. I'm very proud of our parks and our community programs. We just had Reyes Adobe Days, and I don't think I should let any time pass in saying what a wonderful experience it was in bringing the community together, evening at the Adobe, the parade, the events at Reyes Adobe. I hear nothing but very positive feedback. I'm also proud of furthering the needs of our residents and our citizens. I'm sorry, the residents and the businesses. I think we are very responsive. I've been very responsive, but I think we all have been very responsive when businesses have -- residents have expressed needs with businesses. I think that we have a premier development in the city, and that's the shops at Oak Creek. And I encourage you all to go to Wisn's because the new Wisn's promenade is really a marquee for the city, and I hope the rest of Wisn's develops the same way. I think we have done a great job with the Canaan Interchange Bridge, the Reyes Adobe Bridge, minimizing the disruption to the citizens, increasing the traffic flow. Still on Canaan, there's some issues, and I recognize that, but it's a vast improvement. And all of this done within a balanced budget, and I think that is the key. Living within your means is the first step in responsible government. I wish the state, I wish the federal government would take that perspective, but I thank my fellow city council members in acknowledging that and following through.
Thank you.
Okay. I made some notes, and I'm going to go back to a couple of things that I didn't get to tell you. First of all, with respect to business, having strict standards in this school has -- strict standards in our city has resulted in the USA Gas Station, which is used at planning as an example at planning conferences across the country. We also have the Hampton Inn. Oh my God, they came back a couple of times to the planning commission before I was on it, and they finally came up with the beautiful Hampton Inn at Reyes Adobe and Agoura Road, and now it's a prototype for the Hampton Inns across the country. These strict standards have made for our city to be beautiful and high-quality. In 2010, the Clermont McKenna School put out a study and said that the 10 best -- the 10 least expensive cities to do business in is -- for businesses is in LA County is Agoura Hills. By local, every 1% of taxable sale goes to the general fund. I'd like to see a continuous bike lane between the neighboring cities, Calabasas and Westlake, with uniformed striping and signage, which would be a nice safety for safety reasons. I'd like to -- I'm very much supportive of the first step that our city has taken to set up a tourism association with the neighboring cities. Lastly, my skills as an attorney, both mediation, negotiation, advocate, will help me not only bring those to the council to help the council, but also to build the relationships with the school board, with the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and all those other organizations. I've been involved with the Fountainhead Homeowners Association for over 15 years. I understand bylaws and CCNRs, and I understand the need for compliance with those CCNRs. I want your vote. I want to be on the city council. I've worked very hard from day one and been involved in this community for almost 20 years, and I really would like to take this next step and go to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Meryl, you want to go from there? Okay.
I've always loved this city. We moved here from the valley. I saw great potential. I was involved in the early cityhood in changing some of the ordinances or instrumental in changing of it. I'm a mother of three children. I'm a geographer by heart. I'm a -- I am a neurologist. I'm an advocate and advisor for Marion Academy Neurology and have been in Congress and Senate. I'm not afraid of any challenges. I face life and death every day with my patients. I get along with my patients. I have a very viable practice. I have the tenacity, the compassion, and dedication, and will do a great job. I never give up. I've always been under the radar, but not really. I've been told I was under the radar. I am a physician. I'm a healer. I'm not a politician. I do not have any ulterior motives except an agenda to preserve the vision of the city, which we established back in 1982, which was to maintain the semi-rural atmosphere, which unfortunately were no longer that rural, and preserve and enhance the community character in distinctive neighborhoods and commercial districts and maintain the scenic vistas. And hopefully, you will support me. Thank you very much.
I think I'll go right over here. So that concludes tonight's debate. We're hoping to make the debate available on the local cable channel, but we'll see how the video stuff works out as we go to do that. We'll announce that through Westlake Revelations and probably through some of the PFC mailing list if it becomes available. We want to thank our candidates tonight, and again, thank you to Morrison Ranch HOA and the PFCs and Willow Elementary for hosting us, the League of Women Voters for helping us out, and everyone who made tonight's possible. A special thank you to Bruce Stein here. The candidates will remain to answer any questions that you may have, and remember, don't forget to vote on November 8th. Agoura Hills residents are voting for a couple of things. First is there are two seats open for the city council, and the second is Measure K, which is the school parcel tax that raises funds for the school district. Thank you all for coming tonight. Good night.